Okay. Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Thursday, February the 7th, meeting of the Camden Planning Board in 2019. First of all, I'm going to ask if there are any public comments on non-agenda items. Seeing none, we'll proceed. The first item on the agenda is a site plan amendment to the 2006 Wayfair Marine Inner Harbor Site Plan. Before we get going, we need to have the names of all members present and voting. We've got Mark Segenthaler.
Jeff Senders.
You're voting. Jeff Senders, Rosie Curtis.
Richard Bernhard.
Do any of the members have any bias or conflict of interest that they may have regarding this project?
No.
No?
No.
So, we need to make a finding regarding the standing of the applicant to apply. The town's showing that the applicant is the owner of the property. That's been checked. So, I would move to find that the applicant does have standing to apply. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. That's four zero in favor of that. So, I'll make a finding that under Article 12 as a zoning ordinance, Section 8b, the planning board is given authority to review the requests to amend the approved site plan. Do I need to have that seconded and voted on? No. I'm also going to make a finding that Camden Properties LLC has requested a change to the site plan titled "Inner Harbor Site Plan for Wayfair Partners LLC, 59 C Street," prepared by Gartley-Andorsky Engineering and surveying with a revision date of March the 16th, 2006. And I'm going to make a finding that the planning board does have the authority to review this application. Is that something we need to vote on? For those? No? Okay. Where's our lawyer? Okay. So, for any members of the public that are in attendance, this is, the applicant's going to say, we're going to start off, actually, by having Jeremy, Director of Planning and Development, give a brief overview of the process and why it's come back for an amendment. And then the applicant's going to describe the proposal, and the board will ask questions. This isn't a public hearing, but members of the public wishing to speak will be given that opportunity. And then the board will deliberate and see if the application can be heard as an amendment, and if so, whether we can approve it as an amendment. So, Jeremy, would you like to give us some background?
All right. As you indicated, Rosie, this is, would fall under amendment allowed under Section 8rb. I did look at this, and we looked at this to see if I could do this as a field adjustment. Unfortunately, the building permit had expired on this, so it does need to move forward as an amendment. I reviewed the prior approval on this project going back to 2006. This is a minor change from that. All the, the project met all the review criteria at that time, and what I would recommend that you make a motion that it continues to meet that approval criteria, and then do a cursory review of it, and then make a motion to formally approve it and move forward. Okay?
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you want to run us through what's happening here for everybody's benefit?
Sure. Josh, why don't you introduce yourself?
If you wouldn't mind stating your name.
I'm Joshua Moore, representative of Lyman Morris.
And Will Gartley with Gartley-Andorsky. Jeremy outlined it pretty well. Back in 2006, they received an approval for an expanded marina up in the head of the harbor in front of their property. And they didn't quite finish the part that's the furthest up in the head of the harbor. And now they would like to complete that plan and actually reduce it a little bit from what was originally approved. On the plan that we submitted to you, the kind of light black lines show the outline of the marina and the floats as it was approved in 2006. The portion that's kind of filled in with a light color with red lines outlining the floats is what was constructed from that plan. And then what is outlined in a kind of a yellow color with dimensions on it is what we're proposing to complete now. So, it's relatively straightforward.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about this? Do you have any questions? Anybody on the board?
Why is the change?
As far as pulling it back, just because there's no water up in the head of the harbor at that location, they're proposing to do some dredging, but we're trying to minimize the amount, so.
Makes sense. The green Camden Wharf line, how the proposed floats on that corner, what does that mean?
Well, so the wharf line is, by definition, the line that no permanent structures can be constructed within, but it doesn't restrict floats, which is why you see all the other floats that are already constructed within that.
Perfect. I mean, typically, we don't review anything if it's in the water. It has to be on the land.
That's an interesting point. I think that's how it was tried, the planning board prior tried to look at it. There's a provision of the site plan review process, what is required, does require site plan review, and it is pretty clear to me. Proposals to construct, enlarge, or extend piers, wharves, bulkheads, breakwaters, consolidate piers, causeways, marinas, bridges over 20 feet in length, and uses projecting into water bodies. So, I don't know how the prior planning board in years past got to that point, but I would suggest you absolutely need to review.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Somebody has to.
How about the Harbor Committee?
Harbor Committee's, you should.
The Harbor Committee did review this.
Harbor Committee has reviewed. That was my next question.
What was the outcome of their review?
They were very positive. Yep. They had no questions, and so this looks great.
You have fewer floats now? You will have fewer?
We'll have fewer than were approved in 2006.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Where was that paragraph?
That paragraph is Article 12, Site Plan Review, Section 16. So, up at the top is Article 12-1 up on the top.
Section 16?
Yeah. My ayes are working, right? And just so everyone knows, I'm sure I can probably am getting picked up on the sound, they are in process for approval from applicable state agencies on the dredge project that is happening. This is kind of tied to that because in order, there are, you call them pilings, that either go into the.
Yep. Four pilings.
You kind of have to do that while you're in there. It's just more cost-effective to do it at the same time. So, those permits are underway, reviews underway at the state level.
Okay. All right. Welcome. That's all right. Glad to have you here. Is, are there any more questions from anybody on the board about this presentation?
Just a few more pilings. What, is that four pilings?
Four.
And the neighbors, are they aware?
Yep. They were all notified through the permitting that we had to do for the state, that application.
I don't believe Ethan can vote on this because he wasn't here at the beginning. So, vote.
Yeah.
Are there any more questions from the board about this presentation?
No.
Are there any questions or comments from the public about this application? Seeing none. All right. We need to see if the board is, we can allow amendments to an approved site plan without requiring a new site plan application if the board is satisfied by majority vote that such an amendment has only a minor or no new effect upon approval criteria or conditions of approval. And if the planning board is satisfied by the above criteria, that the matter may be heard as an amendment, the planning board may allow an amendment if it's satisfied the amendment meets the site plan approval criteria. Did that really just say everything just one time? So, I mean, you briefly summarized the review. So, I think what we need to do is to find out if this is going to have any effect on the approval criteria and determine that as a board.
I don't think it's going to.
I think it's less intrusive than what had been approved, and it satisfies every requirement.
Do we want to go through the approval criteria? Do we trust that Jeremy's reviewed this?
If you wanted to, we could come right to the applicable section, but it's really, I mean, we're in the water. This would be reviewing the pilings at that point, I would guess, the permanent.
And it is consistent with the approval that went, that happened in 2006. So, I would recommend that you make a motion that it continues with that, same conditions that were met, and met the approval criteria back in 2006, and that continues today under this review. I reviewed it, and I reviewed the old minutes from the last meeting. Nothing's changed.
You can state that you're relying on Jeremy.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah. I make a motion that the proposed changes are in line with the approved plan as originally proposed in 2006, and Jeremy has reviewed, has reviewed the application and the findings, and the board has reviewed the application.
I want to say that we.
As amended.
Did you catch that? Is that clear enough?
First, you have to find that it can be reviewed as an amendment because it doesn't change the.
I made.
Under Section 8, subsection B.
You have to do two.
Okay. So, I make a motion that the board finds that they can review this application as an amendment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye, four zero in favor. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, do you want to make a motion to approve with all the?
I make a motion to approve the site plan as proposed, as it has been reviewed thoroughly by Jeremy and the board, and it can be handled as a minor amendment.
Second.
All those in favor? Do you have any questions?
Well, just like to add, as a minor amendment under Section 8, so.
Okay. Have a second? A second? All those in favor say aye. That's four zero in favor.
Welcome to sign.
Okay. So, you gentlemen are all set. We need to sign. Thank you. We need to sign the plan.
Is there an original one?
This two, wasn't this one?
Do we have to sign one that stays in the town office on my lot?
No, not subdivision. Yeah, sorry. Only subdivision.
Should we just sign this and keep it?
Sign both of those.
Pass it along.
You sign it.
I'll sign it.
We've got one here.
That's right. We have the top of the pile somewhere.
Thanks, guys. That was quick. I've been in your presence a lot longer than this, I'm sorry.
Just lucky I wasn't here to ask all my questions.
You're right, you're right.
This is second. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Yeah, you all.
And we want to shinny permits until all their permits are in place.
Right. We're doing a, the town really appreciates everything you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Wonderful enterprise.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
All right. We've got two more items on the agenda. These are just public discussion items, and this is not a public hearing, so we will take some comment from the public, but, yeah, it is not a public hearing. Once ordinances are ready to go, then we'll have a public hearing on both of these items.
And that's the point at which public comments will actually be on the record?
Correct.
Is that the public hearing, not the, not this session?
Correct. This session, when we take public comment for this, it will give, I mean, we can take, I will take into account what people say, and if, you know, when we draft the ordinance, based on what you folks have to say and what people have to say, but their comments become part of the record during the public hearing process, and that is not what this is today. This is just a discussion.
Yep.
You have two things in front of you, so we're talking demolition delay and adult-use cannabis. You have not talked about demolition delay yet, so let me just start with, I guess, adult cannabis, where we are with that. I have, you got a few documents in front of you. One, it's titled "Working Definitions," and what I have been in the process, and just so for people in the, in the room here that have not been part of this before, just to clarify how we got to where we are today, I think is important. In December 2017, the Select Board appointed the Cannabis Working Group in town. They spent better part of eight months or so working on a proposal for adult-use cannabis in town. They primarily focused on cultivation. They did talk briefly about products manufacturing and made some recommendations on that. They did not go down the road of looking at testing facilities, and they did not look at retail stores. And just so other people in the public know, staten, you guys are well aware, we had a pretty good discussion about it a couple of weeks ago, or maybe a couple of weeks ago now. State law requires a municipality to opt in when it comes into adult-use recreational cannabis. So, what, I took the recommendations from the Cannabis Working Group, which, those recommendations were presented from the work by the working group to the Select Board. The Select Board then took those and handed them off to myself as Planning and Development Director with the intention of bringing them to you to refine those if needed and move those along to eventually a town vote. So, what I have been doing is I've been, again, we've talked about it, has been looking just at cultivation. Part of ordinance drafting, you've got to look at definitions, you've got to look at, you know, zoning. So, what I have done is I've come up with some definitions that are pertinent to cultivation, and I base these, all are from state law, just so you know. When we talk about what adult-use cannabis is, if, there's a definition for that. What adult-use cannabis product is, there's a definition. So, and since we're just talking cultivation facilities, there are four tiers of cultivation facilities allowed under the state law, tiers one, two, three, and four. And just so people know, again, I think it's important, tier one facilities are fairly small. Those are facilities that would have no more than 30 cannabis plants and an unlimited number of immature plants and would not take up more than 500 square feet of canopy area. Just so you all know, canopy areas, if a grower is growing in a tiered system, you know, different levels, it's, each level is counted as the canopy. So, you can't try to stack more plants in a building and call it the same canopy. They look at the, each layer as the canopy. So, tier two is a cultivation facility which has no more than 2,000 square feet of canopy area. Tier three is 7,000 square feet of canopy area, and tier fours are 20,000. And again, I just want to reiterate what the, the working group came up with some recommendations that, for the most part, allowed tier ones in about, in every zone. I have scaled these back considerably from there because I, again, you're going to need to try to line these up with current uses that are allowed in, in the zoning ordinance. So, what I've done is, and if you want to go to, let's see if it's in there, I think I called it "The Proposed Cultivation Facilities by Zoning District." At the last meeting, we had talked about, I showed you a map on the 500 and what the 1,000-foot setbacks are. Remember that the state requirement is 1,000-foot setback, but allows municipalities to go down to 500 feet, and these are from schools. And also, as discussed prior, the medical caregiver law says that caregivers' grows can be, can't be any closer than 500 feet from schools. And you, as a planning board, made a recommendation that we kind of be consistent for the caregivers as well as for recreational adult-use growers. So, the proposal is at 500 feet from schools. We also included in that the public library, the Camden Library, as well as Harbor Park, and as well as the Camden Snowball. And the Y's included in that, what other schools are in there, Stepping Stones, the bus bar, we included the bus barn area that, obviously, the middle school, Children's House Montessori, Compass Rose Preschool over on Jacobs and Lime Rock Street, over on Lime Rock Street, People's Place, Co-op on Union Street, Watershed School, Wayfinder School, and then there is another one out, out on Route 1 North, Susan Tolman State Care. So, we have setbacks proposed for all of those at 500 feet. So, I laid this out a little better, I think, for you to see, if you all are looking at what I'm looking at right here. Do you see that? Yes. Richard's got it. So, what I'm proposing, if you remember the zoning map, D1, I'm saying that no grows are permitted in the B1 zone. B2 zone, tiers one, two, and three on any lot. Keep in mind, all of these are required, would require special exception approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals, and any new building for a grow would require them to conform to the existing character of the district. B3, I proposed, one, tiers one and two on any lot indoor with special exception approval required, and those have to be in existing buildings. There's a raised one in our zoning ordinance. Well, if you go to our zoning ordinance in B1 or B3, I'm sorry, it has to occur in an existing building, and if not, there's a provision and a special exception. So, you're, you're going to be tripped up anyway in special exception, but if you're demoing a building and trying to put in a new building, then it's special exception on top of that for the new building. If you go into our B3.
So, the aim of that is to encourage people to work within existing buildings rather than demoing them?
Correct. Yep.
That's Elm Street, B3?
Yes. And keep in mind, these are all indoors just right now. So, in B2 and B3, it's indoor only. Tier three in a B3, I proposed it on lots of 60,000 square feet or larger, again, zoning board of approval, zoning board special exception approval required. B4, I'm only proposing to allow tier ones, and again, those are, that's the small 500-square-foot canopy, 30 plants. I think it's important when we talk about these small tiered ones that a residential homeowner can grow currently, under the law, three plants. So, if there's a couple that are over 21, they can have six mature plants on their property today, and we don't regulate that. If you have four people that are over 21, you can have 12 plants. So, all of a sudden, you're not far from, potentially not far from coming up to a level of a tier one that could happen on any lot already. I think it's just important for people to think about that when they think about smells and that kind of.
And the outside as well.
Yes. Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
B3, what is raised one related to?
That's what we were just talking about, Richard.
All right.
That's use the existing building, and if you're not going to use the existing building, then you have to go through a whole special exception approval process for that. Our zoning ordinance is the only one I've ever seen that in. BH, I proposed nothing allowed in the BH. BR, Business River, tier one, outdoor and indoor. Going back to B4, if it's indoor, we do have some B4 in the shoreland zone. I did say that not permitted in the shoreland zone if in a building. The reason I said that, if you go to the shoreland zoning standards in the zoning ordinance, commercial and industrial uses in the shoreland zone are not allowed generally, and I, it's in essence, an indoor grow is very industrial, and there's, I feel like it is appropriate to do that. Tier, so back to Business River, tier one and outdoor and indoors on any lot, special exception approval required again. Again, if indoor, not permitted in the shoreland zone. Tier two and three, outdoor and indoor on lots of 20,000 square feet or larger, and that's, again, because those are bigger, bigger grows, allowing those as special exception approvals. If indoor, again, cannot be in the shoreland zone. BTR, I am not proposing to allow any cultivation facilities in the BTR. BTH, proposing not to allow any in the BTH. Coastal Residential Zone, I think this is a, this is one that I think RU1 and RU2 and CR are, you know, those are the zones that have a lot of land still available in larger lot sizes.
That's this map.
And I will get to that in a moment. We also had them come, we had maps done that show acre and a half and two and a half acres in the coastal residential, and you have those maps in front of you, as well as RU1, RU2, and Village and Village Extension. We'll get to those in a minute. Coastal residential, tiers one and two, I'm proposing on outdoor and indoor on lots of an acre and a half or more, and I'm only proposing in the coastal residential zone to have cultivation facilities north of the state park entrance in the coastal residential zone. Again, and if indoor in a new building, must conform to existing character of the district. Zoning Board special exception approval required again, and then, again, if indoor, not permitted in the shoreland zone. Tier threes and fours, I'm proposing those on lots of two and a half acres or more. Those are much larger facilities. Again, only north of the state park on Route 1. And then, again, it must conform to existing character of the district, and ZBA special exception approval required, and if indoor, not permitted in the shoreland zone. Industry District, aye. And then we'll talk about the maps once I get finished with V and VE, if you'd like. So, Industry, we have a small area of town where there's our industrial zone. I'm proposing to allow tiers one, two, three, and four indoor only with special exception approval required. RU1, tiers one and two, outdoor and indoor on lots of an acre and a half or more. If indoor in a new building, again, must conform to existing character, special exception approval required, and again, if indoor, not permitted in the shoreland zone. Tiers three and four, similar standards, but must be on a lot of two and a half acres or more. RU2, same as RU1, tiers one and two on acre and a half or more. If indoor, not permitted in the shoreland zone, and must conform to the character of the district. Again, tiers three and four, similar to RU1 and similar to the CR, where if you're doing a larger grow, it would have to be on two and a half acres or more. And again, if it's in a building, it must conform to the existing character of the district, and then special exception approval required again. And then special exception approval required, again, not in the shoreland zone. Village District, this is one that is a little, I've, I've struggled with a little bit. But, and we talked about it last, last week about the, you know, we have this need for housing. Village District is sewed, generally sewed and watered, has public water, and I don't want to tie up potential residential lots into, into cultivation facilities. That said, when you start thinking about what someone is allowed to grow on their property currently, I thought a tier one would be, could be appropriate in the village zone if it's on two and a half acres or more. Remember, village zones, lots are fairly small. So, and there are a chunk on the, if you look at the map we have, there are some pretty significant lot sizes. Lots that are over two and a half acres in the village zone. And again, it must conform to the existing character of the building, of the district if you're building a new building, and zoning board special exception approval required, and again, not allowed in the shoreland zone. Village Extension, very similar to CR, RU1 and RU2. One and two tiers are allowed, would be allowed on acre and a half or more. If in a new building, it must conform to the existing character. Zoning board special exception approval required and not in the shoreland zone. And tiers three and four would be allowed on two and a half acres or more. And again, I based all of this stuff on what the Cannabis Working Group recommended. I have scaled it back a fair amount, I believe. And I think what's important to all of this is understanding what the special exception approval would need, and how someone would go through that process. So I came up with, and you, you have it in front of you, this, what I call special criteria for special exception adult use cannabis cultivation facilities. Just reading through those, this is where you get into the things like setbacks. It shall be setback a minimum of 500 feet from a lot containing a childcare facility, a daycare, or nursery school, a public preschool program, a public school, or the following public facilities, Camden Public Library, Harbor Park, and the Camden Snowball. And then the next six items define what all of those uses are. For the purpose of this section, public school is defined. We define public school in our ordinance. It's a public school as well as independent religious or private school is how we define public school. So I mentioned in here that it's as defined in this ordinance and as that term public school is defined under state law, which is important. And I also included there some wording on what a private school is viewed under state law, how it's defined, as well as how a public preschool is defined under state law. So we don't have definitions for private school. We don't have definitions for public preschool. But we are required to have those setback from those locations. So that's, that's why, how we come up with definitions for those. We just reference the state's definitions. Same with childcare facility. We do define daycare center, so I referenced that definition in there as well. I did make a note, there was a question about what happens if someone would open a school or, you know, where you have an existing cultivation facility and someone comes in and wants to open a school. I did, made, there's some verbiage here. The town will only verify distance of their post premises from existing uses listed in A above. Once all the state and town approvals are issued, the town will not preclude uses listed in A above from opening at a location within the applicable buffer zones. That means someone could come in, in theory, come in and open a school. But at some point, the cultivation facility was there first, and they would just be grandfathered there for that, for that purposes, for the setback. I also included a provision that says town permits or approvals provide no protection or indemnification against enforcement of federal or other applicable laws that may prohibit operation of cannabis cultivation facility. I think that's just important. A lot of towns are doing that as they're coming up with these regulations. And then the final one, six, for the purposes of Camden Snowball is defined as Town Tax Map 227, Lot 64, 66, and 67. This is all of the areas on the snowball that would include the ball fields up front, the tennis courts, the main ski area, and then then the lot that contains the maintenance building that's off to the side. So those are the standards for setbacks. And then, keep in mind, all of these facilities would have to comply with state law, and there are standards on security, there are standards on who can be in the building, they have to go through background checks, all that happens at the state level. I thought it was important to grab some of those things and put those into our ordinance, just to clarify and make sure that's in place. I did make a section that says, the facility shall not employ a person under the age of 21. And then it talks about no, no person under 21 may enter the facility or remain in that facility at all. So very clear on what that means. I did have a section on solid waste, provide for offsite, they shall provide for offsite disposal of solid waste in compliance with applicable state laws applied to cannabis establishments. Then the next one is a little more in depth on what that details have in play. They shall have in place an operational plan for proper disposal of, I use marijuana there, I'm trying to go to cannabis. And related byproducts in a safe, sanitary, and secure manner and in accordance with all applicable federal, state, and local laws and regulations. Dumpsters and trash containers must not be overflowing, and the surrounding area must be kept free of litter and trash. All dumpsters and containers shall be screened from public view. Trash receptacles on the premises used discard adult cannabis products must have a metal cover or lid that is locked at all times when the receptacle is unattended. Keep in mind, likely, all of these facilities will be required to have 24-hour surveillance on them under state requirements. So I'm not advocating for that. I don't think it's necessary to be fully duplicative of everything that the state is touching on, but I wanted to touch on some of them that I, I think people have concerns about, like litter and waste disposal in town. It also talks about comply with state law regarding pesticide application. Any application of pesticides must be performed by a person licensed by the state as a pesticide applicator. And then we get into odor section. This can be a challenging one sometimes. Ensure that odor of cannabis must not be perceptible at any abutting property. While the town does not mandate any particular equipment specifications with regard to filtration, all cultivation facilities are strongly encouraged to adopt best management practices with regard to implementing state-of-the-art technologies in mitigating cannabis odor such as air scrubbers and charcoal filtration systems. Indoor cultivate, and then below, then subsection of that, indoor cultivation facilities must implement appropriate ventilation and filtration system to satisfy, satisfy the above-mentioned odor standard. Perceptible odor may be deemed a public nuisance. And odor control plans shall be submitted as part of special exception application. I will say, I struggle with that one, it, on how you address, how you would address an outdoor cultivation facility. You know, one way to do that would be to increase setbacks from property lines, potentially. It's just something to think about. Keep in mind, again, people may be dealing with odors from their neighbors, and there's really nothing the town will ever be able to do with that, that I'm aware of, if their neighbors are growing legally for recreational use. And then there's a section that says provide copies of all applicable state applications and evidence of compliance with any and all applicable state rules and regulations. So that kind of covers us on how they're gonna meet their state requirements. Keep in mind, and we talked about it a couple of weeks ago, when I had that handout on all the state, state stuff. So an applicant would go to the state with their application, they would get a provisional license. That provisional license then is brought by that applicant to the municipality, whether it be Camden or wherever else. And then that applicant would have to get a sign-off from that, the town, and then take it back to the state, and then, then the state will issue their license. Prior to us issuing any, and it talks about here, below it on, on I, that we would require them to provide us a copy of their final state approval, as well as, and before, that would occur before we issue them a certificate of occupancy to open. So they would not be able to be in there growing until we issue that CFO and they have all their state licenses in place. And then state, I put in here that state mandated security measures shall be in place in operational. And then, really quick, we can go to standards of special exception approval.
So this is, every single use?
Yes.
Is going to have to go through the special exception process in town?
Yes.
No exceptions?
No exceptions.
Alright, okay, why don't you review those for everybody?
And so those standards that I just read to you, that we read through are part of the special exception approval, too. Those are special conditions on, on the special exception approval. So the standards for special exception approval, and I haven't had time to really meld these with our standards yet. I've just been buried in a lot of things. So I have kind of highlighted some that are duplicative to what we have and added another, one or two. The proposed use shall be of such a location, size, and character as to be compatible with the appropriate and orderly development of the zoning district and adjacent parcels in which the site is located. The proposed use is designed, constructed, operated, and maintained in a manner that is compatible with the existing character of the general vicinity. The proposed use will be consistent with the general character of the neighborhood considering density, design, scale, bulk, and intensity and character of the use and structures. Some of these are repetitive. I just have not had time to meld some together and, and do some editing. The proposed use, although not appropriate for every site in the zone, is appropriate for the location for which it's sought because the proposed use will conform to the general character of the development and immediate areas to architectural style, building bulk, and extent and intensity of site use. As to architectural style, the applicant must show that the proposed structure conforms to exterior facade, roofline, shape, and materials used on buildings in the immediate area. As to building bulk, the applicant shall cause his or her proposed buildings to conform to the height and existing ratio of land area to building and other properties in the immediate area. For purposes of this chapter, the term immediate area shall include all properties located within the same block and within 500 feet of the site of the proposed use. And then, again, this is kind of duplicative here, but it's editing, and I just, these are things that will be looked at by the zoning board. Development space and bulk standards and use conditions of the district in which the property in question is located have been complied with conditional use. Uses which also require variance of development or other standards shall not be granted. And I say conditional use, that should say special exception, sorry. That's what I've been working on a fair amount lately. It's a lot of work, but we've got to get through it in order to get something to a public hearing. I want to just point out, maybe we can look at the map. I don't know if you have any questions on that before we go to a map?
I have one.
Sure. And then we can maybe, before we go to maps, maybe touch base with the public and see if there's any comment?
If you said that would be the best time to.
I think so, yeah. What do you got, Richard?
Both in the zoning districts and the other?
Yeah.
I'm struck by the number of times where it's mentioned that a building has to conform to the existing character of the district. And I thought
Just for sure.
That the only district that required that was B2, which is Elm Street.
Yeah.
And, and so I'm, I'm wondering why it's put in here, and also whether something like that would be quite subjective? Hard to enforce when you're talking about like architectural styles and stuff like that?
I hear you. I will say that that was reviewed. I mean, that was brought up by the Cannabis Working Group. That was a recommendation that they had, that any new building would be in conformance with the character of the existing area and the existing buildings around them. That was a recommendation that they had. And all of this stuff was based on their recommendations initially, and I've kind of pulled things back, added, I think, a lot to things that needed to be addressed.
Yeah.
So I kept that in there, and I think that would, again, that would just, rather than having it listed there, what I would do is have that listed in the special criteria for zone, for special exception approval for adult cannabis cultivation facilities. That's my recommendation, I think. I mean, that group spent a lot of time working on this. And again, I didn't want to stray too far from what they had recommended to the select board.
They recommend that for all districts?
They did.
Because it looks like from what I'm reading, again, you may just have excerpts, that they recommended it only for RU1 and RU2.
I'd have to go back. Well, keep in mind, they were looking at.
I'm looking at the, this is from the 17th.
Let me, let me go back.
Oh, yeah.
Because this, this is the only use of town that we're recommending certain architectural.
We are, well.
That is, that is a slight concern of mine. It goes to that and the, and the odor. Like, we don't really regulate odor from long grain restaurant.
Well.
Do we?
We can, we can regulate smoke, odor, fumes, gases. So we do, in that regard.
Abnoxious odor, isn't that?
No, yeah. It's come up on some restaurants before.
Right. So restaurants would be the only thing you can think of, or?
Yeah. I mean, this is kind of, this is a standard one that we, most communities are addressing. You know, the big concerns have been nuisances over odor from big grows. And what I don't want to cause, I mean, especially, we don't have a lot of commercial area in town. We don't have industrial parks. We don't have, you know, we don't have that. So in order to facilitate what the Cannabis Working Group was recommending, I, I think we need to be somewhat cognizant of potential impacts. And in terms of compatibility with surrounding properties, if, again, we don't have an industrial district, we have like three lots that are industrial in town.
Yeah.
It's really tiny, right? But if we're gonna allow them in the CR, in the RU1, and the RU2, I didn't even get to a village, or I did, I stopped at Village. I don't think I talked Village Extension. But if we're gonna, if we're gonna allow these in those zones, what I don't want to see is a planner and planning director, and planning director is to see industrial scale buildings, like steel buildings, like you would see in an industrial park out on Malino Road. That is upwards of, now, keep in mind, a grow that's 20,000 square feet of canopy, and if they're just sticking to that 20,000 and they're not doing tier, you know, industry would say, I think, and I think one of the caregivers that was here the last time, and I don't know if he got to it exactly, but when he talked, if, it's almost double, and maybe not double, the size of
The canopy.
The canopy that you need your building to be because you need area for your immature plants, you need area for all, everything else you've got going on. And so if it's a 20,000 square foot canopy, your building may be 30,000 square feet. And if we're gonna say that that can, doesn't have any review criteria aesthetically, or it doesn't have to conform or be compatible with other area, other uses and buildings in the district, then my fear is that you're gonna have, potentially have, I mean, all of this is potentially, right? I mean,
No, no.
Land is, land is, land is at a premium here in Camden, and if, if, you know, a grower was looking to grow anywhere in the midcoast, I'm not sure they would come to Camden. I mean, real estate's pretty pricey.
Yeah.
But still, we need to, we need to balance and, you know, value the property owners that are around them. And if, you know, if you get a steel building.
We don't have anything like a review board who's ever looked at anything like that.
The special exception would do that.
What, the ZBA?
The ZBA would go, it would go through the ZBA, but.
Yeah, but you, like you, the ZBA has people informed as to scale and clustering and pit, you know, architectural aspects?
Yeah. I mean, it's a lay, layboard, yes, but it's up to the applicant to prove it. So if an application came.
I don't need any more paper.
If an application came in, I would expect that, I mean, it's up to the applicant to, you know, prove how they're complying with that architectural standard or compatibility with the neighborhood. So if they came in with a steel building, we're gonna say, okay, show us all of the other buildings that are in the immediate neighborhood, in the area. And that means taking photographs. And how are you meeting that standard? I mean, it's pretty easy to say, okay, we got Cape houses or a farm agricultural buildings around us, and they come in with a steel building. I mean, it's pretty easy to say, okay, we got Cape houses or a farm agricultural buildings around us, and they come in with a steel building, there's no way I believe, I would believe that a zoning board of appeal, under the special exception review criteria, would say, yeah, that conforms to, your steel building conforms to the architectural character of the neighborhood.
But Jeremy, if somebody was putting up a new agricultural building, that might well be a steel building.
Like a horse barn or an indoor riding arena.
And what's the difference, that could easily be a steel, because that's going to be the most cost effective.
I think that's what we're looking for, is having that balance.
And, and are we stopping somebody putting up a steel horse barn or a steel-
We are not currently.
Farmyard building, and so there's no exception, there's no special criteria for somebody doing that, so why would we be putting special criteria for somebody that just has got a different use inside the same building?
Correct. Well, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, I'm trying to come propose an ordinance that I think is appropriate for the town of Camden, and, I mean, I value what you all, what you're saying.
We're giving you our feedback as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think, just to, you know, dovetail up what Rosie's saying, I mean, but I was, I had this image in my mind of somebody doing a horse barn, you'd have issues of odor, you'd have issues with the size of the buildings, you know, now, you could obviously imagine a horse barn that looks a lot nicer than maybe a steel building, but they could also just say, well, this is the best we can do, we just put up a steel building.
I hear you.
And I don't want to make it look like we're singling out the cultivation of marijuana, it's like, just because you're doing something that's new-
I, I understand.
We're going to put this extra standard on it, but I do, I do appreciate what you're, you know, what you're trying to do, I'm just not sure if we have a handle on, I just want to make sure it's something that's applicable across the board, more or less, rather than-
Yeah.
And not hoping up to being challenged legally.
I don't think we'd be challenged on it, Richard, I, I mean, this is a standard in, I mean, towns use conditional uses, we call them special exceptions, drive-through restaurants go through this, and you've got to prove that you're compatible.
I think the special exception thing is, is fine, I just, again, we're focused more on just that, that one zone.
Maybe, Ethan, we can look at those that are, you know, tier, only for those tier three and fours then.
I think that makes more sense.
I mean, those are the bigger buildings.
You're looking at big buildings there, I mean, but, I mean-
I mean, a tier two is only 2,000 square feet.
I don't know how, I don't know how, I don't know how a tier four is ever going to be in the, conforming with any of the districts that we have unless you're out, unless you're out by Tibbetts.
Right, they also, they also need to comply with all the bulk and space standards, you know, so-
Right, right, and also, yeah, so I don't know how we're going to get-
Alright, I mean, I think that's, I, I understand what you're saying, why don't we, I can work on that, doing a, for the larger tiers three and four.
I think that, I feel more comfortable with that, I do, yeah.
The suggestion I would have is that instead of, instead of specifying that in the uses-
Yes, it's not going to be.
Move it into the special exception.
It's going to, yeah, that, yeah, that's, I got that, that was my, it's been all over the place, so.
And then I do have- I do have a question on, who was it? Oh, yeah, in the Village, so you have tier ones restricted to lots of 2.5 acres, whereas in virtually every other one, tier one is permitted on-
Yeah.
Lots of 1.5 acres.
Yeah.
I don't know how many lots would be affected realistically by that.
So on this map that we have, on the map that you've got, it may be hard to see, so all the colors are, you know, separated into zoning districts, and then the hatch marks are those that are two and a half acres or more, or larger. The ones that are just colored are, meet, are between one and a half and two and a half acres.
Was, was the hash mark used in the?
This is, this is the map we're looking at for the-
Yes, and I think we have some more there.
And what do you mean by the hash marks, I'm sorry?
Um, so if you look at the legend down below?
Yeah.
So this, everything that is, looks like this.
Oh, I see, yeah.
This is, this would be RU one, that is two and a half acres.
Yeah, that's-
These are RU one that are an acre and a half, between an acre and a half and two and a half acres, these are less than an acre and a half. This orange with the hash marks on it would be lots that are two and a half acres or more. The orange that does not have those crosshatches on it are between one and a half and two and a half acres.
And the other ones are smaller?
Yes, and all the other ones are smaller, so the purple-
So we're in this, the purple, there's like, you're talking about maybe four or five lots that almost-
Keep in mind, some of this is, is going to be out because of setbacks, too.
Shoreline, right, setbacks.
Yeah, I mean, that, my thought on that was just, was really for consistency, leaving it at one and a half, because it doesn't look like it affects too many lots.
I, I hear that, what my thought was on the Village Zone is, I think people's expectation is, we don't allow much in the Village Zone as it is. And so going along your thinking, right, of where you were before, we don't say, and Richard, you too, we don't tell other zone, other uses that, what their building looks like, other than in the downtown one, right? We also don't allow a heck of a lot in the Village Zone or in other zones, but we're allowing this, so, I mean, I'm just trying to, it says, this is a weird balancing act when we're coming to this, this cultivation thing, because-
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate, I appreciate that, I guess my feeling is that it would stay more true to the goals of the working group to keep that number at one and a half in the Village, that's my personal view on it.
I hear, I hear that, I was trying also to make sure we have land available for residential development, and I didn't want to tie up Village lots that are, have sewer and public water into cultivation facilities. That's just, as a planner and knowing that we have issues with housing in town, affordably priced housing, we don't have a lot of lots for sale, there's just, you know, people are holding on to it, whether or not in the future that people start selling or subdividing, we'll see, but I, I didn't feel it was, I think it's, I think it's important to hold on to some of your Village Zone for what the Village Zone is intended to be, and that's residential, in my, my mind.
That was kind of my point, was, kind of knowing the history of this town, it's, it's actually kind of a conservative town, and we don't allow much in the Village.
Mm-mm.
So I would almost say, just don't even allow it.
That's where I was going, honestly, that's where I was.
Yeah, but having, having other things I've heard tonight from my co-members here, to look at things to be equitable throughout the town, you know, to sort of treat everybody the same.
Well, zoning doesn't, zoning doesn't do that at all.
Like that?
Zoning doesn't do that at all.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's definitely different uses allowed in different districts, and we recognize from a planning perspective that that's important to have those different uses. I mean, to me, it's, I mean, to me, the non-equitable piece would be singling out marijuana grow facilities for architectural kind of restrictive stuff where nobody else is, to me, that's different to anybody else.
I get, I get that.
Being, being kind of clear about what we can and can't have in zone is something that already happens in zone. So I-
Yeah.
And we've also got to hear from people who want to make comments as well, so we haven't still got, in terms of feedback.
Um, it'd be helpful on feedback, and keep in mind, I also want something, you know, we spent a lot of time on this, that working group invested a lot of time on it, and I've spent a lot of time on this, it may not seem like it, but there's a lot that goes into this.
Oh, it's clear that you put a lot of time into this, and it's appreciated.
But I, I want, I want to get something to the voters, I mean, it's got to go to the select, got to go through a public hearing, go to the select board through a public hearing with them, and then it goes to voters, and what I don't want, I mean, the working group was very adamant, they wanted this to move quickly, they wanted, because they wanted people to be able, they wanted people, people to be able to take advantage of this as an opportunity for, you know, economic activity for themselves. And they wanted to see it move fairly quickly, but if that's the case, like I said to them many times, you know, sometimes you can't shoot for the moon because you've got to know where you are, and you may not, you know, it may go down at, at the ballot, right? I mean, town vote, you may not get it if you ask for too much, so I was trying to be a look, as conservative as I could, knowing where they were at, and knowing what, I mean, that was my only, my only thinking, but, you know.
I will put it forward, that my opinion is that the, in the Village District, I think 1.5 acres, you're still talking about the smallest tier, you're talking about, what is it?
One and two.
500, 500 feet of canopy.
Just one, just ones.
On an acre and a half, it seems like it's not, not many people are going to buy a lot, acre and a half in Camden and put up a 500 camp, square foot canopy, right?
And I think when people realize-
Somebody owns a lot like that and they happen to want to put, you know, they want to use that for that purpose, I would support that.
I hear that.
That's my personal perspective, I don't know how the rest of the board feels on that, but-
And I think it's important just to go back that if you have five people, five adults living together, and they all want to legally grow-
Right, you're getting close to that anyway.
You're getting to five times three, you're getting to 15 plants already.
And then you'd be, then you'd be sort of, also when you're, when you're educating the voters, you would say, you know, these all require, almost, many of these require 1.5 acres for that, that tier one level.
Yeah, I mean, I-
As opposed to having a different standard for one, one district.
It's fine with me.
That's what this process is about, I mean, gathering information and opinions and giving you feedback.
At one time, did you mention that the group might come here and we could meet with them?
Um, the group's not formed, I mean, they're, they, they're disbanded, so the working group's not still active. I would like to get them back together to start looking at products manufacturing and testing labs, retail stores, I mean, that is, that's a whole nother, that's a whole nother thing, and I mean, that, that's going to require a lot more, I think, than this. Keep in mind, just, here's another, just throwing it out there, hemp, industrial hemp is now legal to grow, farmers can grow that federally now, it's legal. So this doesn't, like, so if a hemp farmer wanted to come in to start growing hemp, they could do that, and there's no-
And didn't you say that that was outside the agricultural, or that's not, there's a marijuana that was outside, cannabis that was outside of that? There was a, you, you mentioned the-
Oh, the FDA?
Cannabis isn't protected by the farmer.
Correct, correct, cannabis is not protected by rights from, I would assume hemp is.
Okay.
So somebody could come and build a massive big metal shed to grow hemp in, I mean, maybe they're not going to do that, and because they're growing hemp and not cannabis, we're saying it's architecturally and all the rest of it, it's subject to no standards whatsoever.
I hear you, I understand, I understand where you're going, you are, I get it.
I mean, we have this kind of conflict.
I mean, I, I, you know, I mean, I want the county beautiful, and I love nice buildings, but lots are forced upon reasonable.
There's these, these conflicts all the time. I get that. I get that.
Okay. Okay, any other comments or questions?
I, I recognize the work you put into this, it's, it's formidable, and it's really, uh-
Yeah, does the, does the Route one, the CR north of State Park make sense to you?
Well, I was looking at that-
It makes sense to me.
Depending on how people look at it, the State Park ends at the Lincolnville Line.
Well, I was, okay, I hear you.
And this is the State Park, and this is the line, or you're talking about it?
I was talking about the entrance to the State Park, yes.
I just want to clarify then by saying entrance.
Does that make sense?
I'm not clear on the logic, I guess.
Well, um, you know, I think everyone knows, like, down south of town in the CR, those are pretty significant properties down there, and, you know, same, if you go down Sherman's Point Way, and I just felt, it's a little different feeling. I almost feel like, sometimes I feel like, I mean, I drive that all the time, and there is definitely a change somewhere there about the State Park on the, the character and the feeling of, of that. And people that live out there may not agree with that at all, but it's, it is, it is, it's different, and I almost feel like sometimes our CR needs to be almost like two kinds of CRs.
But that's what we came up with in the comprehensive plan, the three zones.
Yeah.
Because, you know, this is the one you're talking about, sort of, the state area?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
And you're talking about this, and then there's one closer into town.
Correct, and that's why I feel like there's three kinds of CR, two or three kinds of CRs, I agree with that.
I don't know where we're at, having that put into zoning, what are we to go through for that, town vote and everything?
Yeah, you have to actually develop ordinance amendments to do all that, and not there yet.
So right now, so focused on what we're looking at here tonight, does, does anybody have any comments about Jeremy making the CR zone available for cultivation? That's what the question was.
Yeah, it was just, it was a comment, north of the park.
CR north of the State Park.
Yeah, I, I guess that's still, I'm still trying to get my, my mind around the distinction there, you're saying that someone on Sherman's Point Road would not be able to?
I am.
Yeah.
But then you look-
I hear you, I mean, if you look at, and it's such a hard thing to do, is, I mean, we have so many zoning districts with so many unique properties in them.
Let's just match it like the Village and either X or Y, or just have it like tier one and two and keep your 1.5 acres.
But also look at CRs, I mean, there's some pretty significant land area up in the CR too, and again, we don't have much commercially developable land in town, and so we're trying to fit something that in some ways is agriculture, can be viewed as agriculture, right? I mean, if you've got an outdoor farm, what's the difference of, and again, these are small, I mean, if you look at size, you know, if you look at a, you know, a field of corn growing, they're very large fields, if you're looking at a field of cannabis growing, and you're only allowed a tier up to a tier four, which is 20,000 square feet, that's a half acre, you know, it's not a lot. It's kind of small, but I, I don't know, and is that agriculture, is it industrial? It's like the Madison Farm Backyard Beauties tomato thing, you know, if they came to Camden and said, we're agriculture, because we're growing tomatoes, on the face of it, you'd say, yeah, agriculture. But then, when you look at it, you know, I don't know what they have, they have more than 10 acres, 15, somewhat, maybe 20 acres of building, growing tomatoes, is that agriculture anymore? You know, it's, I don't know, I mean, that's a, that's a big question.
I think when you, it gets tricky when you start dividing up zones.
I know.
That's, that's where I'm at, I guess.
If the zone is the zone.
Yeah. Alright, I hear that.
Which door is creating a zone within a zone, really?
When you look at it, yeah, other than the, the ones that it's not permitted, it's the only one that I've said you have to be north of a certain area.
Yeah, and that, I mean, that's, that's, that's exactly where I was feeling, is if I owned a property in there, and I was interested in making some money on the side, or, you know, cultivating or whatever, I would feel like that was, I realize I live in a district, a zoning district, and I would want those rules to apply equally across that district to me, as opposed to what I think is a little, a little bit of an arbitrary designation, the State Park.
State Park, whatever.
Alright.
Again, I'm not expecting a lot of industrial facilities to go into the CR.
Nor am I, I mean, that's the reality.
We're not, we're not really, but, but I'm thinking more of the existing property owners, not somebody coming in and buying up land, and if they, that's, I think that was the, I think the, what I, what I took away from the, the, the working group was that they wanted to afford the opportunity to people who own property in Camden to be able to use that property to make some money off of this, rather than having the corporations come in. And if that means somebody in the CR wants to put up a, you know, a little 500 square foot grow or something on the land, or they meet the other standards, I think that should be permitted.
Yeah, alright, I, I hear you.
So what do we leave this CR at now, are we going to look at it to be similar to the Village, or is it just to-
I would just, I would just strike that language that says north of the State Park.
That's, that's what I'm thinking.
One, two, and three and four.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's similar to, yes, it's a little villagey-like, but it's similar more to the RU one and RU two and lot sizes, if you look at it.
So Rosie, did we ever address the architectural standard thing, like, to a resolution, or are we still sort of, it out there?
I thought what we got to-
The recommendation that I see here, just again, looking back at their, at their recommendations, was that the, the character of the building, or character of the district, applied to RU one and RU two. I don't see it for others.
I was just there for the discussion, and it was important in the Village, in the residential type areas, that people try to use existing buildings.
Yeah.
But if they were going to build a new building, they wanted it to look like the rest of the area. And in the rural districts, what they wanted it to look like was rural, they didn't want it to look industrial. So it's the character of the district that you're trying to preserve, rural, that's going to have a certain kind of building. So that was their, that was their thinking, I'm not saying anyone, that was the deal.
So what is a, what is a hoop house?
What is a hoop house?
Like, what is, what is that as far as character of a, like, if somebody wants to grow during just the summer months, and they say, I'm going to put up a hoop house, a hoop greenhouse?
Yeah.
I mean, there's no restrictions, if I want to put one up in my backyard, as long as I meet all the setbacks and everything. Some people put up those for garages, I've seen those in town.
We've got residential facilities in town that have corrugated metal on and look nothing like the rest of the character in town.
Alright, I get that.
Okay, and they're able to do that, and I'm not, I don't think there's anything wrong in that, I'm really glad that we've got something that doesn't look like an 18th century Cape. I mean, I understand, I just think it's a slippery slope we're going down when we start imposing, and how do you impose those standards in reality? How do you prove somebody's growing one thing inside a hoop greenhouse and not another?
They actually didn't want to allow any of the buildings in the Village and areas.
So again, look, my question, my question would, I understand that, but in reality, it's often much more cost effective to take down an existing building and put up a new one, and that new one could be much more energy efficient than an old one. So again, to try and shoehorn a, a new use into an old building that may make no sense, that's like leaking energy left, right, and center, we've just been through all of this with the school, I mean, you want to start talking about things that architecturally matters.
Yeah.
Again, we, we didn't have standards like that really, you know, it's a tricky thing.
Yeah, I, I will say in terms of the energy, so if you think about, if someone is trying to turn a- Yeah, I, I will say in terms of the energy, so if you think about, if someone is trying to turn a barn, an existing barn into a commercial grow, um, it becomes a conditioned building. Right? So, that conditioned building will need to comply with the energy code. So, that barn, that they think they have this barn that has no walls, it's just a framed barn, no interior, cheat rock, there's nothing, right, and there's no insulation, they will have to insulate that building and become compliant with the energy code. Today.
Well, they probably want to anyhow for energy.
Yes. What's that?
They probably wanna make it, uh.
Well, I know, I'm just saying about your comment about the energy piece, they're gonna have to comply to the, with the energy code.
Greenhouses have to comply with the en, the energy code then.
A greenhouse doesn't because it's an agricultural building. This is an agriculture and doesn't fall under that.
I, I think we're.
It's a good question.
You know, we're dealing now with probably two of the most, I won't say contentious, but possibility to be debatable subjects there are. Architectural style, character being one, and I'm taking a look at like, look at this zone here, the RU zone. What can be typical in this zone? I mean, those, there, there's.
I know. I hear you, I hear you, Richard.
The second being cannabis, which is a heated subject anyhow, and yet, the cannabis group wants this to go through right away? I don't see how, I don't see how it could happen that quickly.
Um, how it happens is, I take your, I take your co, your comments and comments from the public, and then draft a formal ordinance amendment that's, you know, that we can take and put into our ordinance. You guys have a public hearing, you take comment on it. The select board has already, you know, pushed this from the working group and said, planning board, try to implement this into the zoning ordinance and then get it ready for voters. So, that's what I'm doing, that's what your task is, and then you hold a hearing on it, and then we get it to the select board. There'll be more public comment there. If there's any changes that are, you know, substantial, um, then we gotta start the process over, but, yeah, I'm gonna take everything you say and, you know, along with what the working group had proposed, and then any public comment that I, um, you know, can try to implement and, and then have a hearing.
So.
In like, two weeks.
It would have hit him with same, it would have seen more rationale if we could have that group.
Yeah, so, uh, going back to the, to the architectural style and everything, you have in the standards for special exception, number two.
And these were just drafts, but.
Yeah, but you have the proposed use is designed, constructed, operated, and maintained in a manner that is compatible with the existing character, the general continuity. That might be enough. And I'm not even saying we have to strike that, but, cause that language is, it gives the, a little room to the zoning board to sort of.
It's a little wishy-washy, yeah.
I mean, it just gives a little leeway.
It does.
Um, and if, if somebody says, I've got this steel building I wanna put up, and they say, well, you know, maybe you could, you know, put up some screening.
Uh-huh.
Or you could, you know, something that would satisfy reasonable people, cause the zoning board, believe it or not, they're very reasonable people. And, um, they're able to make decisions, you know, that, 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 um, that are, keep in mind the, the best interest of the town. With what, instead of having that in every section, we could just.
Oh, yeah, it's not gonna be in every section, it would just be into that, yeah.
Yeah.
I'd be comfortable with that.
Alright. I mean, I hear what you're trying to say.
We like, we like the idea, we don't want, we don't wanna see big metal buildings going up everywhere.
Yeah.
But, you know, we don't wanna single out.
Yep. Alright.
So, when you look at the purpose of village, can I question whether, uh, whether it should be allowed in the village district in the first place? I'm with that. Um, you know, I mean, when you went through these, each of the zones, did you, did you actually, like, study the purpose of every zone?
I tried, yes.
Yeah.
And just so you know, sometimes purposes, um, uses that happen in zones are not always match up with what the purpose is, I will say. That's very, in every zoning ordinance I have ever dealt with, you can find lots of uses that don't always match up with the purpose, I'm just saying. So, but I, I get it.
But if you're trying to develop, something new for each zone, um, I don't know where I'm going with that.
I mean, one thought is to allow, like, in the village, and what I was, I was thinking about, and the, and the working group looked at it, about home occupations, you know, whether you can look at this as a home occupation, and it's possible, and, you know, like, these smaller grows, because there are standards on how big your home occupation is, like, how air, how much area can your home occupation actually take up? Um, so maybe what we do is look at the village district and try to stay in line with the home occupation standard as far as size-wise, cause we do allow home occupations, right? I mean, if, if, um, and, so we're not talking.
Well, and, and what they, what they say there is for residential scale businesses.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, maybe I, I guess that's why you just limited it to tier one.
That's why I did limit it to tier one.
And, and again, what we're talking about, tier one is a pretty small, pretty small impact.
It is.
I mean.
So, someone could have one of those in their basement?
But no, kids can live there.
Right, but adults owning a property could apply in.
That's where I think people are gonna run into some issues, them, them thinking that they're gonna be able to do a home occupation grow commercially.
And that wouldn't change if it was, the basement was locked, kept locked or anything, it's just the premises, counts as the premises, yeah.
So, but I mean, I, that's why I went to the, went to village, it's just a tier one.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's reasonable. It allows some use, but not, not everything. And it's, it's still required, uh, lot size on there, so.
Do we want to have that lot size?
You wanna leave that lot size? I mean.
It's a one and a half makes sense.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna go to the one and a half personally.
Uh-huh.
I think that makes sense.
Is everybody, we've got general consensus about that on the board?
Okay.
That one and a half acres and, and continue to allow a tier one.
And outdoor in the village?
Outdoor and indoor.
Okay.
Indoor, in, indoor?
That's what it says right now, tier one.
Outdoor in the village?
I know.
I mean, that's, yeah.
Yeah, do we want to?
Just indoor, I mean.
Okay. How does everyone feel about that? I mean, I went there on some of these.
I don't have an issue with that at all, I mean.
I'd rather be a little more conservative than.
Yeah. I mean, I, yeah, I think that would be.
So, much like in the B, B2 and B3 and B4, I said indoor only. So, I mean, I think it's appropriate to go village.
I'd be comfortable with that, yeah.
That's not making it less restrictive than the other ones.
So, what is the village now, outdoor, indoor, 1.5?
Indoor and 1.5 acres.
Tier one only.
Tier one only.
Yeah.
So, it's really small.
And, um, the rationale, as I, as I've heard it from you, is that you want the village to remain, um, that it's for housing and increased density of housing, and.
The ev, that possibility going, moving forward.
I, I don't know how I feel about that, but, um, I, I don't wanna see, I don't wanna see the, the village become, uh, how could I put it, like, precious compared to the remainder of the town. And so, I sort of get my heckles up when I hear any sort of thing that's, that's being more restrictive on the village as, as any others. But if I buy into, you know, the philosophy that we wanna, wanna keep it for more lots, you know, and more density of housing, I, I think that's the way you'd have to sell it. How do you guys feel about that?
I mean, that was my intent, that's where I was trying to go, come from.
I'm, I'm, I'm all for encouraging density development downtown.
I mean, I, I.
And in, in the village, basically, I mean, I, I think that in long term, in terms of sustainability, we need to be doing that more.
Absolutely.
So, does, does this address that?
I'm comfortable with that, at this point.
I mean, if you're looking at this map, you've got these purple lots are the only ones that are.
Right.
And, and we've decided to include the purple ones without the hash marks.
Right.
The, the gray on it.
A lot, yeah, a lot, a lot of them, I think, are even smaller without the hash.
I mean, so you're not, again, a lot of it is sort of the outlying parts of the village district.
Yeah.
Um, you don't see a lot right down in the middle.
No.
And, and again, when you're, when you're, when you're cultivating marijuana, my guess is you're not targeting a place like Camden to grow right in the center of town, if you're, if you're gonna put up a, a lot.
Like, that's sort of.
Hidden plain sight.
Yeah.
But again, we're trying to, we're trying to find a balance between, you know, the working group wanting to allow local people to have small-scale conservation in downtown, and the fact that it was a very close vote, and, you know, almost half the town voted against anything happening, really, so we're trying to.
And I, I, just a clarification, I think what the town, when they did that, um, right, there was a vote of some sort. Not the, not when you look at what was the vote at, when this, there was the people's referendum, but there was another vote that occurred. Um, and it was about retail, um, um, retail and social clubs. It wasn't about cultivation facilities and products manufacturing or testing labs.
And that's one that was very close?
There was, Genie, that's correct?
Yeah.
There was one that was very close, but it was just retail and social clubs.
Yeah.
So, it didn't look at cultivation, it didn't look at products testing, it didn't look at manufacturing.
In town passed significantly, didn't it? I mean.
I don't remember.
It was more than, more than a 2%.
Which one?
The one the people's referendum asked.
Yeah, right, that was different than this.
It was a fairly significant margin.
And people didn't like the way it was worded, that was the biggest complaint.
Yeah.
But it did, I read it today.
That was closer, but it still passed.
It was only, um.
52, 48 or something.
Yeah. But even that, social clubs, which is a pretty controversial issue, still passed.
And those are prohibited under state law.
Right, at this point, yeah.
Now, not coming around anytime soon, so.
Okay.
Alright, I think I heard your comments, loud and clear, I think it's, I think it's.
People get a chance to.
Yeah, I think it's.
Yeah, that's different from the public.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Yeah.
That's a lot of work. I really appreciate it.
Okay.
We hammer at you a bit, but we know you can take it.
What's that?
We hammer at you a bit.
Alright, that's funny. Far worse than my last.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
So, at this point, is there's anybody in the public who'd like to come up and make comments? Um, you're welcome to do so, we ask that you come up and speak your name, um, to the microphone, and where you're from. Any public comments? Alright.
Alright.
Wow, that's fancy, what do we do now?
Demolition delay.
I'm expecting that.
That's, thank you.
It's, it's this odor that's like pulling me.
Gotta get some food. I just, I just got off the boat, I was rowing, and I just got home, and I got the call from Genie, I was on the wrong beach.
You're rowing?
Yeah, I'm in Belfast.
Oh, you're doing open rowing?
Yeah.
In the Red Belfast.
In Belfast Harbor, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's 37 degrees, no gloves, no jacket.
Sweating.
Really?
Let her roll, yeah.
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 Awesome. I didn't know you did that up there.
Yeah.
Is Rowan your cox?
I watch you guys row, row often.
Rowan is the cox of the men's team, yeah, she's, yeah, I know her very well.
Alright, um, the next one, um, just a little background on this, and I, the planning board may have heard some of this in the past. Um, the Historic Resources Committee, Pat Scaling, has done a ton of work, um, on drafting. So, keep in mind, just going back to our comp plan and what I tried to lay out for you. Genie, did they get what I, my, what I led off in my draft ordinance, the pre-piece?
I don't think so, it's not explicit.
No, okay.
Do you want me to go again?
Um, and I think it might be good for them just to have, but, so the comp plan, I'm talking about Historic Resources, um, recommended that the town move forward on the Historic Preservation Commission and drafting, uh, an ordinance to, um, to, you know, issue certificates of appropriateness and those kinds of things for historic properties in town. Um, and then review permits for demolitions and all that kind of stuff, um, which certified local governments and Historic Preservation Commissions review all the time. Um, there has been movement in the past to try to move that along, I, I don't think it's moved forward, um, is, as well as some folks in the Historic Resources Committee have, um, desired. So, they had worked on, uh, drafting a demolition delay ordinance. And, um, some concern arose this summer on a property that, um, got demolished on Jacob's Avenue. And that was part of a, at the time, um, the group was looking at, um, the possibility of making the Jacob's Avenue area a, um, historic district because of the character of the, what I think were, they thought were Sears Craftsman's homes, but they weren't. They're actually stick-built homes by, um, someone, um, in town, and they're an architect.
Well, that demolished them, eh?
No, and Pat, Pat is here, I think you could probably speak to that, but, yeah, they weren't Sears Craftsman homes actually, correct?
I always told they were.
Yeah, me too.
Um, they were built by a, um, a builder here in town. Um, doesn't mean they're, is.
That's beautiful.
They're probably better.
They're probably better, I have a Sears Craftsman, get home, it's probably better. Theirs are probably better than mine. Um, but anyway. Um, so there was some concern about demolition and, um, that it takes away from the character of the community on some historic, when you demolish historic buildings. Um, Pat spent a ton of time, and so did the committee, looking at demolition or Historic Preservation Ordinance and demolition delay ordinances across the country, in Maine and in Massachusetts. Um, and it was a pretty, they drafted a pretty robust, um, ordinance, um, demo, demolition delay ordinance. It was pretty all, it was pretty encompassing, encompassed all of the town, not just, um, not just the historic, what we have is in our overlay, historic overlay district in our ordinance. And, again, wanting things to, um, you know, get passed at town meeting and understanding that there's been concern in the past about being over regulatory, um, sometimes, Camden is that way. I looked at what they were trying to get at, and I, I felt that focusing on those areas that are already designated in a historic district or in an over, historic overlay district was important, rather than trying to spread out into town, um, to pick up other properties, um, is what they were trying to do. And I, I, it was, I, I understand what they're trying to do, there's some pretty significant properties all over this community, historic, um, that would be, that would fall under, um, you know, could fall under, if there was a federal undertaking, they would, they would, um, you know, have to be impacts on those, would have to be mitigated. Um, so what I did was I drafted a, um, kind of a scaled-back version, um, much scaled-back version, honestly, from what they were proposing. Um, and this is, this would just propose a delay or a waiting period of, um, to 60 days, where the applicant, um, would have to do public notice to the abutters and in the newspaper and to us, to the Code and Planning Office that they're proposing to demolish a building. And then that 60-day period would give, um, the intent is to give, um, stakeholders, whether they be neighbors or historic resource, um, folks and, um, others, the opportunity to try to work with the person who is trying, who is intending on demolishing a building, whether there's alternatives to that, can you save it, can you, um, move it, all those kind of, um, opportunities. Um, and it would also give, um, there's concern in town about, um, solid waste and construction demo debris and all that, so, this would also encourages, it doesn't require, but would encourage someone to salvage, um, building materials, um, if possible, and just work with stakeholders to do that. That's, that's the extent of what this ordinance would do. Um, and it would apply to the overlay district, um, every property in the district, not just historic buildings or ones that were contributing to the historic district, it would apply to every property in the district. That was a thought, it is not a, um, historic review ordinance, it is just a demolition waiting period, uh, is what it is. I will add that building permits in our office, in the code office, we have 60 days to issue a building permit. 60 days, I, that's remarkable. Um, that's a long, long time, I've never seen.
Is that standard?
No, that's not standard.
I can see how some people would, would take that as, as punitive, because in a, in an environment like this with a short building season, 60 days can mean the difference between huge amounts of money, like, concrete pouring and stuff like that.
I mean, I will say, our office, we issue permits as quickly as possible, right? I mean, but the ordinance does say 60 days, so, um, this is in line with that, you know, on the demo, you have to do asbestos, you know, you gotta look at asbestos, you gotta deal with all the environmental issues on a demo too, so, and mercury switches need to come out, you can't just demo that stuff, you legally have to remove all that stuff, so. Um, it's not like someone, um, has an idea to demo a building, comes in, gets a permit, and then the building goes down the next day necessarily. So, there is some plan. So there is some planning that goes into this, so.
But this is saying before they can even start the project, or the project is gonna be a sixty day wait.
Correct. There's a sixty day waiting period, yes.
For anything two thousand dollars or more in the historic district, you're gonna have to go through and notify butters.
If you wanna demolish a building in the historic district.
Or just two thousand dollars or more and work to the building.
No, I mean, I didn't, I didn't look at this specifically, I kinda drafted what you, what Jeannie just gave you, and Jeannie, kinda put this into the ordinance.
Well, it's in this one here.
Yeah.
In one.
I just wanted to.
Yeah, I see that, I will look at that and make sure that that's addressed.
Do we have a, do we have a map of the district or is it?
We do, right there.
Number one exists right now.
Yes, yeah, I just wanted to be clear that, like, if you go for number one, 'cause you're going five thousand dollars on a historic building to.
I didn't know that it would involve a delay.
No, I just wanna be clear that they wouldn't then have to.
So everything in green is a Historic Overlay District, and this is the Camden Fire, Great Fire District.
Okay, yep.
The first few words of A though.
Chestnut, you got over the Cedar, Chestnut Hill, right on there.
Down to Dillingham Point.
Dillingham Point, and B.
The two thousand.
And then High, it's High Street.
I thought it that way.
And then, just first properties on.
Cause that two thousand is a low number, I think we need to move that.
This is Union Avenue. Yeah, so that's, uh, this is the Montessori School here, am I right about that?
Yeah.
I think it's in.
It is, I know, so it's gonna be a process to change that two thousand, but I think we need to.
I mean, is somebody saying to take the roof off a one-story house?
Yes.
In order to make it a two-story house, does that count as them, that they have to wait sixty days?
No, that's a good point, we can make a clarification on that, I'd like, um, probably Pat to make, to weigh in on some of this too.
So if somebody say takes one-story house and they want to turn it into a two-story house, and they have to take the roof off in order to do that, is that demo?
That's what the, this part of it is, that, that's that two thousand dollar.
All right, I think.
It's demo, and it's over the amount.
Automatically, we're saying, anybody doing this, we've got to advise anybody wanting to do this, you've got a sixty day waiting period before this can.
Well.
If you're in the historic district.
If you're in the historic overlay district.
Right, right. I, I can clarify, and I'm glad Pat is here, 'cause I think she would probably like to weigh in on that, um, on what their intent was initially. I don't think it was going to apply to proj, to.
Just don't tear down the whole building.
To that, just, I think it was to, tear down of a building.
Yeah, before we.
And it's not interior, if somebody's doing an interior job on a building in High Street, that's, they can still do that?
Correct. Correct. Yes.
That makes sense.
Yeah, and, and just so people know, even under Historic Preservation Commission reviews elsewhere, that are, if there's a commission that's part of a certified local government, and that is a National Park Service process to become a certified government, that actually, local government that actually has a Historic Preservation Ordinance that meets their standards for, for that, they don't do any interior reviews, it's all exterior views. Just so you know, those reviews are really not color either unless it's thrown into your local ordinance. People often talk, talk about historic commissions dictate what color you can use. Generally, those are not included unless a, a, a community wants to include that specifically in Historic Preservation. We're not going down that road at this time.
Jeremy.
Yes.
Uh, could you explain to me who might, or who or what might be various stakeholders?
Um, various stakeholders would be neighbors, would be, um, interest, you know, architects potentially, build, other builders, anyone that has concern or an interest in a property. Um, and it, you don't have to do notice to those people, it just, what I was trying to get at is, you send notice, it goes in the paper, and then it goes to the butters and goes to the town, and then you, um, that gives, it just is a waiting period that gives people the opportunity to reach out to that guy, person that wants to demo a building and say, hey, can you just, the town has put a temporary stop on this, we're concerned about this building. If you're gonna build, if you're gonna demo it, so be it, but can we salvage some materials? There might be some significant historical, um, you know, cornices or something in the building that someone may want to keep, someone may wanna do a recordation, I mean, that happens at the federal level if there's a demolition that's gonna happen. There's a whole process to record a formal black and white recordation that happens. Someone, the town's historic, you know, Historical Society may wanna, or the Historic Resource Committee may wanna document a significant building, um, before it goes away, I mean, that can all happen in that process.
The way this is written, if somebody's changing out a window on a house in High Street.
Hold on, hold on, let's not look at this, let's look at what I.
Not this.
Not that, let's look at, not that, let's look at, I'm sorry about that, this piece, yes. This piece, just, let's just look at this bottom piece that I had drafted, right? The bottom piece, all it says is, "No permit for the demolition in whole or in part," okay, "in part, of a building or structure located on, on the Camden Historic Area's overlay map as may be amended, or any properties or potential districts that are under review by the Maine Historic Preservation Commission or Park Service, for inclusion as a national registered landmark or historic district shall be issued until sixty days after notice of proposed demolition has been provided to the abutting property owners. The Planning Board, the Camden Historic Resource Committee, and has been published in the newspaper of general circulation. Copies of said notice shall be provided to the code enforcement officer, costs for the notice shall be borne by the applicant. The waiting period shall not apply to demolitions that are ordered by the code officer or deemed life safety hazards by the code officer or the fire chief. The sixty day waiting period is established to encourage the owner to work with various stakeholders to explore possible alternatives to demolition. In addition, the owners are encouraged to work with interested parties to salvage, recycle, and reuse as many of the building materials as possible." That's all what I'm trying to get at.
At what point do you need a demo permit? When you're doing, when you're doing remodeling work on a building, at what point would you need a demo permit?
You need an interior demo when they're demoing, so, um, I'd have to talk to the code officer on if you're, are you referring to like clapboards? Like removing clapboards off a building, does that need a demo?
I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out how.
What is demo defined at for this purpose?
What triggers this?
Yeah, I mean, when you say in whole or in part, that's where we get into the slippery slope, and so.
Define that better.
Yeah, somehow.
So if you're changing out a window on, in the back of a house on High Street, that's not demo?
No. No.
Thirty, thirty percent of the structure, I don't know, I mean, I've drawn.
If you're stripping the roof off and replacing the roof, is that?
I am going to meet with the Historic Resource Committee next, um, Monday, Tuesday? Tuesday? So why don't I have that discussion with them, and I'll work with co, with Steve, the code officer, to, for him, what meets, what, what needs a demo permit, like, if I'm taking the siding off, do I need a demo permit?
Yeah.
Um, do I, and likely, he's probably gonna say, yeah, no?
No.
We have a demo, it's part of the building permit.
Yeah.
And that would involve anything but the removal of the building.
And so, so are we saying then, if the demo's part of the building permit, and that involves anything but the removal of the building, it sounds like what you're telling me is that demo's almost an integral part of most building permits.
Okay, many of.
In many cases, but that's not the intent here.
But effectively, what this seems to do then is say that most any project that happens on any of these buildings is gonna have to wait sixty days.
Well, let's.
That seems to be what this, in the historic district.
I hear where you're going from, where you're coming from.
That's what seems to be the, the net effect of this, and is that what we want to do, is that reasonable? That would be my question.
Do you think that's reasonable, or no? I mean, I'm just trying.
That's my only concern.
Uh-huh.
Does it seem reasonable to the board?
It's, it's, it's knowing the scale, I mean, that's really, you know, again, if it's, if it's a significant demolition, then I think it's reasonable, if it's in a historic district, but if it's, again, you know.
Windows.
What if, you know, somebody, like, you know, we've heard the, the taking off a roof, or, um, you know.
Or taking off a, you know, bulkhead covered stairway that goes down the back off the side of someone's house.
Do you have, you wanted to?
Yeah, I'd like.
Since you're here, why don't you come on up and shed some light on it?
Why don't we do this together?
Okay, and could you please make your name for the record?
Uh, Pat Scaling, Camden. Well, um, all of the research that we did when they talked about removing parts of the building, if it were a part of a building that was just an attached shed, that, it wasn't affected, you know? It's just if you were moving a wing, if you were moving a wing that was part of the original building. So it, it isn't, you know, I don't know, we can define it more, um, definitively, but it's, removing a roof, that isn't, it's when you remove the whole building, it's, that's what we're trying to prevent, is removal of the building. If it's a small shed, or a garage, or something that was added to the building, all of the things that I read, and we'll go back and look at it, um, did not, did not keep you from removing those kinds of structures.
So, so what I'm hearing, cause what you, what you just suggested was that if you were gonna remove a wing of the original building, that that would require review, so that's talking about removing part of a building, not all of a building. And also, what's original, I think that gets very tricky, because, you know, is this something that was built fifty years ago? Or some of these properties are two hundred years old, and then they've had gradually, this is how buildings grow and develop, they have pieces added on to them all the time, so.
Do we have something like the, on the, for the historic district, what are contributing buildings to a district, or no? No? I mean, so new, so new historic districts, when they're doing new historic districts, they look at properties, the park service does, and the State Historic Preservation Commission, and say, okay, this is the whole district, but these buildings are contributing, these buildings aren't contributing to the district, but they lie within the district, right? And so obviously, this was done so long ago.
They become part of the district because they contribute to the whole, whole district. But, um, there are, uh, examples to look at, we can look at examples of what it means.
I mean, it's, it's, I think Rosie's point is well taken, it's tricky, you've got a house that's built in eighteen ninety-seven, and then in nineteen twenty, somebody put a wing on it, and then they say, well, they don't wanna take the wing off. We don't know.
Well, that's, see, that's, that's what could be, that could be talked about in the sixty day period, you know, that's the whole idea of conferring. I think the, the Historic Resources Committee has reasonable people on it, and that's, you know, one of those things that you come in and talk about. Does that part of the building really contribute to the original building, does it not? Is it that important?
I just, I just think that sounds like impossible, I mean, I really do. Mind you, there's probably nobody in this room that gets more affected by having unsavory parts of architecture added to historic district. Like, I'm very affected by this, and I understand what they're saying about Jacob's Avenue and everything, but I, I keep going back to sixty days. Like, if, if I was going to take down, uh, say, in a garage with an apartment I have on my property, down, and, and there was a, there was a construction schedule to get it underway in November, and this thing came up in October, I'm out, I'm out of it, because then I would get no advantage of, other than winter construction, it would end up costing me thousands of dollars more. Then I come to you guys, and who, who are the authorities who say that this is historic? And this is what you can do, and this is where you can take this stuff?
Well, keep in mind, I mean, that, that, there's a lot of that in this more robust, more detailed.
So I make it, like, American Boathouse, that's one thing, that's a National Park Service designation, but, uh.
Well, that only happened because the town said, if you're gonna do this, you're gonna do it to the historic park standards, or National Park standards.
Right, but I'm saying that that building, and that, you know, that's, that's at a different level than most every other one that we're looking at here, certainly, certainly the one that was taken down on Jacob's Avenue.
Well, I get that, what, what this was trying to do was, again, just, this doesn't mandate anything other than, stop.
A wait period.
Let's take.
Take a break, work, you have to do a notice to all your neighbors, and the town, and the Historic Resource Committee, and, and then it's up to the Historic Resources Committee, the Planning Board Chair, the neighbors that get that notice, to reach out to the applicant and say, hey, we're concerned about this. That applicant, under this draft, could say, I appreciate what you're saying, but it's gonna come down in fifty-nine days. That can happen, and that can happen under here, this was giving neighbors, historic committee, and the Planning Board Chair, and the town, an opportunity to say, okay, again, just, is, can you do something else? Have you thought about this? And you may find some people may say, oh, I didn't even think about that, great, I'm gonna do that, or I'm gonna salvage this.
Yeah, is there any, uh, presidents of groups or individuals in town who take on that role? Like, the one you're talking about in the future might be you and Rosie. I don't know if there are other, other groups in this town who, uh, take on that role of, of advisors.
Well, I think.
And moreover, if they're qualified to be.
Well, that's, we would like to have more builders and architects and, you know, on our committee.
Not necessarily.
It's gonna have more qualified.
It would be very subjective, and, mind you, I, like, the five years I worked in Boston, I did a, a lot of projects that had to, uh, had to pass by the BBAC, the Back Bay Architectural Commission, and I'm telling you, there, you, you can't believe what you're, you're up against there. But that's one level, and I don't see how you can dilute it to come down to what you might be talking about in these sixty days here, waiting for the chair of the planning board to come up with it.
You don't have to wait for that chair, that planning board, you send the notice to the town and the butters and say, here's, it's coming down in sixty days, it's up to you to come to us.
And then the snow's falling on my foundation.
I know.
So, so, so my question as an architect is, at what point in the process does this happen? Cause if I have a client come to me and say, I want to do an addition on my historic property rights, and I want it to, this is, say, November, and they'd really like to break ground and, like, take part of that building down in order to make it more useful and put an addition on, right? Do I have to, do we go through the entire design process based on taking that down and putting a new wing on, right? And get permitted and everything, and then I just have to advise them there's going to be a sixty day waiting period before they can start building? Do I build that into the construction process, or do we go and talk to you guys before even we start, they, I start charging them money for design fees?
Well, um, one thing, I don't know if this applies or not, but what Richard said, I mean, if you know you're going to do a construction project, I mean, if you know you're going to do it, and you know that the town has a sixty day, you know, demo, I mean, then you kind of address that ahead of time, but I know that doesn't always happen, but ideally, I mean, if you're, if you're planning on taking it down.
Financers, and, I mean, it, it sounds.
Towns, towns develop ordinances all the time.
It's like, the, the typical job that would come up to your sort of review is not going to be one that's designed by an architect. As, as you and I know it, ten percent of the built environment in the United States has been architecturally designed. Therefore, ten percent of our houses, you know, the right, that one on Jacob's Avenue is not architecturally designed. So, there, you're not gonna have that, I, I won't even call an architect a facilitator, but you're not gonna have that.
It's funny that you're kind of, uh, you're focusing on something that, um, I, it wasn't intended in here to, to delay any re, you know, reconstruction or re, um, additions. It was really to take a look at a building before it comes down, the whole building comes down. We weren't looking at additions or renovations.
But that's not, okay.
That wasn't the intent, the intent was.
But that's not the way this draft ordinance is written, it says in part.
In part, it does, it does, and we can define for the purposes of this section, demolition is.
We have, we have a suggestion over here.
Let's go.
Oh, good.
Okay. And that first line.
Yep.
If it reads, "No permit for the demolition resulting in building, resulting in removal of a building or a structure."
Say it again?
"No permit for the demolition resulting in removal of a building or a structure."
That then becomes about the entire building. That would be similar to saying, "No permit for the demolition in whole of a building or structure." I mean, it's, it's phrasing that slightly differently, isn't it? Essentially saying the same thing.
Well, I mean, that is, that is another way to do it, is to just say, take out the in part.
Yeah, I think it is the in part.
Yeah, just take out the in whole.
Yeah.
Um, because I think, I think it's a lot easier to, to get your mind around, somebody wants to tear down a building, whoa, stop sixty days, like, the whole building, just flatten it.
But the reason I, I didn't go with the in hall is, then you get the loophole, well, we left up one wall.
And that was my other question.
Right, yep.
And this goes back to our site plan review, when they go through a certain criteria, if they change the facade, if they change.
Yeah, certain zones that applies to still.
Yeah, and so, I'm almost thinking that there would be a similar method to when this would get triggered, and the same thing, is a fifty percent of the exterior facade on the road gets changed, then this is when that gets triggered. The roof line, you're gonna change significant roof lines and dormers in a historic building that's highly visible from, you know, the bay or something, then that's when this gets triggered.
I get that, I mean, and that.
We weren't going for alterations for buildings because.
Right, cause then you're, you're starting to get into this other design review place that Richard's talking about.
But you could argue, from the way this is written, the in part would allow somebody to argue that there's an alteration being made, and therefore there needs to be a sixty day delay, and I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at it from. And I'm just, I'm, I'm looking at it from a nuts and bolts professional point of view, which is why we have this back and forth, right? We, we want to eliminate unintended consequences.
Yes, that we're not talking about alterations.
Yeah, why, why don't we stick to resulting in removal of a building or structure?
Does that, does that.
Mark's, Mark's language satisfy everyone on that?
And then, and then, I mean, part of this, you know, I'm relatively still new to town. It's been a year, but. Trying, and I've heard a lot from the Historic Resources Committee and I've heard also what. Efforts have been made in the past to address historic preservation in town and they didn't always seem to go very well. And never, things never moved along to the point where, you know, if you read the comp plan, it talks about, alright, town, the comp plan that everyone voted on. Right? It says in there that we're going down the road eventually of Historic Resources Commission, Historic Preservation Commission and to look at CLG status. If that, that's what everyone voted on, that's in the comp plan, that talks about. Review of alterations and modifications and changes in siding and changes in windows.
Of everything in town?
Of everything, historic properties. You'd have to define what your historic districts are and all that and that's why I think there, the committee's broader plan is a, was a little. Challenging because it didn't look at, you didn't have an, an architectural historian, someone that is qualified professional under the Park Service. Look at what buildings this would apply to, you know, a demo would apply to and that's what needs to happen eventually when we start going down this road.
Is that underway or?
No, not, not yet, no. So I think for me. To see really where, as planning director, to see really where this town is in terms of historic preservation. And what we value and what this town really values. This is a good indicator to me. It's a good starting point. On, on where we are.
Yeah, one thought I, I had also is um, sort of to address some of Richard's concerns about the, the ti, the length of time it could delay. Is, is it possible to build in a carrot? Like if you can get sign off from the Historic Planning Committee and the other interested parties, you can proceed before that sixty day period is over. Um, you know, if you're able to say, go in and reasonable minds come together and they say, hey, if we can salvage this stuff and. If you can meet these criteria, then we'd be okay with, then you go ahead with your construction. I, I think that might be a, a positive way to, to at least do something.
Alright, so that would be something, I mean, that, yeah.
Okay.
That's an interesting, I mean, I hear you, I hear you and I think it's a good idea.
So it doesn't have to be necessarily polished off today, but just a thought.
Define what the criteria have to be. The approval criteria.
And remember, we were just trying to have this little waiting period and not really a review done.
And the reality is that somebody could basically do the sixty day waiting period and kind of pretty much blow this off and go ahead and do exactly what they're planning on doing at the end of it, right?
But it's just like, okay, let's just take a step back, think about it. Maybe there's someone else who would like to buy the property, you know, maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe you'll change your mind about tearing it down. Perhaps we'll move it if it's that important.
Right, I mean, there, when I was in Bangor, there were two historic buildings that were on the, the city's historic districts, a historic review that got moved. Moved down the street to a new lot, two of them.
Who paid for it?
The builder.
It was Westside Wiley.
It was, what, somebody wanted. It wasn't his building. He wasn't doing the demo, but he was interested, interested party and he had a vacant lot. And he said, I'm good, I'll, I'll do it, you know, and he moved it.
Well, to me it's, I mean, it sounds idyllic, but I don't see that it will work that easily. Because I don't see any precedent of anything else in this town or others that I know around here of having. And you, you're probably gonna be one of the major ones that'll come to who can facilitate and make all this. Happen not only in that period of time.
Again, for me, it, and if, if you just look at it, all that someone has to do is if I'm coming to the town and I want a demo, we're gonna say, oops. You're in the historic district, you gotta take a break for a second, you've gotta send notice, we need a copy of it. You're sending a notice to the Historic Resources Chair, the Planning Board Chair and the neighbors. It's up to you to do that. You have to provide it to us, evidence that you've done that. And then, then nothing else happens. I mean, nothing needs to happen necessarily. They have to wait for, in essence. The Historic Resources Committee to say.
So what am I, what am I as a neighbor supposed to do? I just got a letter from you. What is it, five hundred feet away or something?
Not for me, from the, from the gentleman or person that's looking at demo.
I mean, you might go to them and say, really, you know?
Do you have to?
You know, I mean.
Hey, you know, I love the windows. I love the door on this building.
It starts a conversation about the value of the building and where it is and, you know, maybe nothing else.
I think to do that, you need a facilitator. I mean, you really do because like I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna walk up to. My neighbor three doors away and knock on the door and say, okay, now what are you doing and oh, I sort of don't like it that way, you know, like.
No.
I'd see how it can happen.
Some may, some may.
You're gonna run into liability issues if you start inviting people to come and take bits of the building away. I'm just wondering about.
I would leave that to the, the person, I mean, it's gonna be far more, you know, it's much cheaper to bring an excavator in, grab that thing. And, and put it into a dumpster, but you may find that, I mean, honestly, there. If you look at building materials today, I mean, you know, building materials today are very cheap, generally. The Southern yellow pine that we build with is like twenty years old, right? I mean, you and I can splinter that. You look at the wood that's in these old buildings, that is rugged dense wood. Someone may want that. People are, I mean, you look at barnwood builders, right? There's a show, whole show on it and they go across the country picking apart old buildings.
I did, I did on my property, just, there was a studio attached to an old shed barn and I just put on Craigslist, hey, old shed. And this guy from Rockland came and took it down and just took that part and took it away.
Right.
I mean, I've built houses that have been out of eight percent recycled materials. I've, I've saved buildings that have been ready to be demoed. I'm a huge fan of saving old buildings, right? So I'm, I'm not against this in any way, shape or form. I'm just looking at the practical reality of this. As if this goes through, as an architect, what do I advise my clients? Do I say, put in a demo permit right now? And we're gonna start the design process and the design process is maybe gonna take two or three months, but by the time that the design process has gone through. You've sat out the waiting period, so we're not gonna hold up the construction schedule. That's really effectively what we're gonna need to be.
It's like a pre-demolition permit.
And just remember, how few people are going to have that opportunity of hiring an architect to do that for them.
Or even a builder, but even a contractor, I mean.
The contractors are filing permits all the time. I mean, that's their.
I mean, but they're really also gonna want to be saying, there's gonna be a sixty day waiting period, so we need to kind of get this going quickly really before.
I mean, I will tell you, most of the time when someone comes in for a demo, whether it was here when I was working elsewhere, they'd come in. They thought they're gonna get a building permit when they leave, right? People think they're gonna walk into an office and I'm gonna get my building permit today.
Stan.
Ready to go, approved. And when they're demo, we say, oh, wait a minute, is there asbestos in the building? And they say, what do you mean asbestos? And we say, oh, you've got to do this notification form. And, you know, I mean, that's what has to happen. You gotta do those kinds of things moving forward and it, the days of getting a permit to do. You know, things right then and right there isn't the reality. I mean, and, and you've gotta deal with, you know, you gotta deal with mercury switches. All those things have to be removed before you demo a building.
And also you have to pay all your property taxes before we issue a demo permit. We have to have proof that. Property taxes and there are no liens for sewer water. So that all has to be done and that takes.
It does.
And I also, I also think having a demo delay says something about what we value in this town. We're not saying you can't take it down, but we're saying we value some of our buildings. We, we wanna take a look at it. Let's, you know, let's just.
There have been some really historic buildings that have just got ripped out of, both in the land rock or without any thought whatsoever and there's a lot of people are very sad to see them go.
And some, you know, and some of them deserve to go, you know, not every old building is, should be saved. I mean, we all know that, but. You know, some, it could be recycled and, and I think some of them deserve a second look. You know, if the American Boathouse weren't in the historic district, I'm not sure it would have gotten a second look, you know, it's. I mean, it was a historic building and I think we need to.
What is the makeup of the Historic Preservation?
Resources.
Resource Committee?
Committee.
Yeah, is it, is it a volunteer board?
It's volunteer.
Select board.
Appointed by the select board. And how many members?
We have seven members.
A couple of architects, I believe.
We have one right now, but we have one that comes quite often for, as a volunteer.
And historic, with a historic focus.
I mean, I was, what I was just trying to, I'm trying to get my, sort of to come up with a solution for Richard with his concern about, you know, going down to your neighbor and saying, I don't like what you're doing with your building or something. Maybe if the, the committee is sort of the point person, the committee has a little more autonomy than, than a neighbor. You know, they can sort of be the shield for that discussion or, or the, as you said, sort of, you know, a point person. And it might be that that could be.
Knowing the Historic Resources Committee and sitting in on some of these, I mean, I will say, I would. Believe you guys would be very proactive if a building, if you get a, a notice from someone that you're, they're proposing to demol, demolish a building that's significant. You guys would go out and say, ah, it doesn't matter, this building, but otherwise, I mean, oftentimes I think you'd say, you, it.
We also.
And then they would reach out to neighbors or.
Right, that's sort of my thought, is if there, if you have them as sort of the.
And we have, you know, this model from Deb Andrews who works with Portland Historic, they're not preservation, but. Portland, I can't remember her title, who did you remember?
She's the.
She, but she, you know, she gave us this model where when demolitions or major changes are going to happen, that theirs isn't just demolitions. But when there are alterations in the downtown Portland area, they invite the person to come in and talk to them about alternatives. And within that sixty day period, we could invite the owner to come and say.
And I think you guys would do that.
We would, yeah.
I mean, I think it would happen. I don't think that used to be.
Have that experience in what you just did on the back of your house with the hoop thing.
No, cause I'm not in a historic district, but. And, and, and no, as far as I understand, what we're dealing with, with, what I had was a, I had a separate building from my main residence. That was a studio that had been appended to an old garage barn type structure. And the barn garage structure was deemed by contractors and architects to be pretty much not, not salvageable. Not really worth anything as a structure. And so we decided to retain the studio's portion and remove just the barn side of it. And that, I don't think that would have triggered any of this because it's not the main building for starters. That this barn shed with not historic structure.
Just a net with.
But you could, you could move the, you could move the pieces a little bit and, and come up with a situation where it does affect somebody. But I don't think it would apply to a barn shed that was out, you know, separate from the main building, which is what mine was.
And the other thing is we have resources with the state in Augusta with Historic Resources people in Augusta and also Main Preservation. I mean, if, if the person who was going to demo wanted, we could call some people and to, to talk with them about possibilities for the building. I mean, they're very anxious to help us out, I think.
I think this is, I think this is a good first step forward. My next hesitation is of a building or a structure. And in our definitions, when we say structure, you're talking satellite dishes, walkways, rock walls.
That's fair.
And in our definition, a building is any structure having a roof. So I think we could just get rid of or a structure.
Uh huh, that's a good point.
I'm still interested at what point the process is happening from a design point of view. I'm still interested in what point in the process is, happens from a design point of view, because if somebody's invested. We don't always know when we start the design process, what we're going to be able to use and what we're not going to be able to use. And sometimes those decisions get developed in concert with contractors as you move through the process. And so you don't actually know what you're gonna be looking at wanting to demo until you've gone through the design process. And if somebody has already spent, say, fifty thousand dollars on design, right?
Would they spend fifty thousand dollars on a design on a renovation before they even, you knew that that building was gonna stay or go?
Half the house, yeah, easily, that's, that's, I mean, yes.
Let's say, I think I might modify that a little bit. In the beginning, if they were going to a design professional, they would probably give my heads up of what could happen. So hold back on spending your money, paying my fee while we walk through this thing, coming and asking you.
Wait two months, but we may not know before we start designing what we're going to want to demo. That's, that's.
You can open something up and help us.
Right.
That's my, that's my, there are so many uncertainties in the design process. I feel like hands are, are getting tired a lot and that makes it hard for. And, and, and I'm very much in support of the intent of this. I'm just looking at the practical reality of working with this as, as a design professional. Because I would not want to take my clients through a four month design process. They could easily be doing a million dollar renovation on a historic structure in town that happens. All the time, those numbers are perfectly reasonable to be what they are.
Are we talking about?
We're not talking about renovations.
We're talking about whole removals.
Removal of the whole building.
Right.
It's the entire, we've been absolutely.
That's, that's where we are, resulting in removal of building.
So if anybody's doing, knocking half of it down and putting an addition on this doesn't.
Removal.
Removal, yeah. What do you call it? Scraping and building.
As long as it doesn't say in part, I'm okay with that. Because I don't think you, I mean, I think you, you're looking at a property and say, are we gonna, you know, remodel or are we gonna demo it?
That was my point, bro. That was my point, Rosie. I mean, I would think you guys know if that building's coming down pretty quickly, starting.
That's, that's gonna be the first thing you do. If you're looking at, looking at purchasing a property, you say, I'm either gonna use this building or I'm gonna demo it. And then.
Right.
But if you have said beautiful old barn or garage or some of these historic structures, there are equally historic carriage houses that go along with them.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's, that's.
Are they get, are they part of this?
Sure.
I mean, it's its own building.
I'm just playing a play, devil's advocate, of course, this is.
Why don't I work with the Historic Resources Committee next week and kind of really just define what building is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
I mean, are you in general okay with doing a hear, I mean, I need to start scheduling some hearings at some point. Um, and we can, are you generally in agreement that something along this. Waiting period is appropriate and okay to move through a hearing at some point once I can draft something? Okay.
I think it's, I think it's rather punitive. I'm gonna stick to that.
That's fair.
And I, I also believe that. It's, it's sort of a dream. I, I just don't see how it would.
Well, I, I hear you.
Have we, have we, have we got examples of other communities that have done something similar?
This one, I will.
There were several going on in Maine right now that have, that have recently passed demo delays.
But do we have any historic, do we have any background on the effect that they've had on their communities? How long have they been in place?
This one right here, this what I did here is for the most part exactly verbatim Cape Elizabeth.
And what's been the effect on Cape Elizabeth? Have they managed to?
I can call them tomorrow. It's still.
I would be interested in what the effective results of it are.
It's still in existence in the zoning ordinance in Cape Elizabeth, all these years later.
If you wouldn't mind calling up and just finding out.
I can do that, yep.
How that's worked for them, that would be good to know.
And I can get a, a list of other towns that have recently passed demo ordinances.
But it, but again, I'm interested in effectively what, I mean, if you've recently passed, you've not got a whole bunch of background.
And Cape's been around for a while.
So you can check that out.
Are you folks gonna add more historic districts like Jacobs Avenue?
Maybe individual properties. I don't know about districts. We've talked about some other districts, some other streets that might. Become historic districts if, if the people were interested in it. You have to have a, you have to have. A lot of buy-in from the residents as well. You can't just say, oh, you're gonna be a historic district.
And, and in these, in, in one of these overlay districts like say High Street. Every house is included or does some have more merit than others?
I think on High Street, there are only like a, a couple buildings that are non, they're, they're considered non-contributing, but.
And was that, was that done by like the historic thing in the state?
Right, that was.
These are national, national registered districts.
But it was certified by Main Historic Preservation.
And Jeannie did say we have a document that has which ones are contributing in the district.
Yep.
The application includes the, the important structures and the ones that wouldn't.
Right, I remember reading something.
Yeah, I recently walked that district and we, our committee is asking homeowners who don't have plaques on their houses if they would like to purchase a plaque. That's going on right now. And we've had six purchased plaques recently, which is wonderful. But there are only like two buildings that are non-contributing and even if you're non-contributing, you can have a plaque because your house does contribute to the district. So it's really quite a nice honor.
How much do the plaques cost?
The plaques are a hundred and fifty dollars. They're hand cast by Richard Remsen and he actually gives us a discount. I mean, they're very expensive to make because they're individually cast.
Thank you.
I would say, I, I wanna thank Pat scaling. I would say, I, I wanna thank Pat scaling for a ton of work on this Historic Resources stuff, I mean, it's-
Yeah, I'd say that, really, it's good work.
And, and Jeremy, we, we came with a, a lot of, a very detailed plan, and he's kind of walked us down to this, you know, so-
No, that's, that's good collaboration we like to see, so.
I think you gotta start somewhere.
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, thank you very much, yeah.
Alright.
Do we need to, to make a recommendation to send these, or do we have these to planning, planning, planning sharing, not yet?
Thank you. No. No, not yet, nothing is ready, um, what I think I will do is, um, we have some time, but I think I'll meet up with Genie tomorrow, and we'll figure out, um, dates and things for hearings, um, so.
The first you could have here, if you scheduled it tonight, would be the twenty eighth, your normal meeting is the twenty first, and if you review Jeremy's language, then an approval, we can, um, do something in March.
That makes, I think we need to, we need to see, yeah, I mean, I think we need to see the-
If this is close-
Yeah, I don't think we're far.
Then he can go ahead and, and tear for that going.
Yeah, so for a public hearing on what date, twenty eighth?
If, if, that we can't make the twenty eighth, if the language isn't, if they don't think that the language is going to be ready-
We've got fourteen days or twelve days to get to have the language ready. Fourteen, ten?
Ten. Ten, has to be ready, ten, it has to be ready when it appears, at least ten days in advance of the meeting.
So how does the board feel, do we feel like Jeremy can make the necessary tweaks, or do we want to reevaluate the language?
I'm taking, um, the thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth off.
You can, you can always-
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I'll say a couple things, uh, not, rather not schedule too many extra planning board meetings-
I know.
On, on a Thursday night, 'cause it takes me, takes me away from something else that I have, um, and also, you know, I'm not sure that there's an urgency on this one.
Well, I, I, I get that, the challenge is, is urgency for June, um, and that's where March comes in.
I find March, that'd be on a regular meeting, right? What I'm saying is, I'm not, I'm not really anxious to push it into February if we don't have a meeting.
Sure. It's not an applicant.
If it was really urgent, I'd be fine coming in for a special thing, but I don't feel it-
If we meet on the twenty first-
For no good reason, yeah.
Plus you're trying to get a vacation in there.
He needs a vacation, you can tell him.
If we meet on the twenty first, we can have final language done on the twenty first for, for it to be meeting on the public hearing on March seventh.
And I can go ahead and advertise it for the seventh, and if it doesn't go, it doesn't go, but it'll be advertised.
And I probably, I probably won't be here on the twenty first.
Okay.
School vacation.
There's a chance I might add a ten, too.
Well, that's just language, that's not the hearing, so, I mean, I can share it all with you, and you guys can provide your comments and whatever, but, I mean, I'm, the marijuana stuff, I think I've got your thoughts on it, I'm gonna try to move that along for, I'm gonna try to move that along to have a hearing on that on the seventh, Genie. That's my hope.
Very good.
Okay, anything else?
So we don't get regular notices of when planning board meetings are?
Well, I said, I said the agenda.
You did?
Yeah.
When?
Was I on that email?
She said, tomorrow's meeting, I, what's my luck?
Yeah, I don't think I got that.
I thought I put you on.
I, I won't argue with you, Genie, trust me, I know better, but, but it's far more likely that I overlooked an email than that, that you didn't send it, but it's possible, I did not see.
No, no, I, I may not. If you may, also, I may have used an old mail machine right now.
Were you rowing when Genie called you?
No, I had just gotten home, sat down, and got my test, it's no big deal, I'm just around the corner, so.
So can I make an emotion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
So, yeah, alright, on those in favor?
Hi.
You're supposed to go, you didn't say hi.
Starving.
Thank you, so we're closed, thank you so much.